Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Cooper, and I am the Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Planning at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And it's my pleasure to welcome you on behalf of the Baker-Plato Administration and our Commissioner Martin Suberg to our last meeting in a series of four outreach opportunities that we've offered this summer to get public input on our solid waste master plan for 2020 to 2030. And I want to thank you very much for joining us. And I do want to start by noting and letting everyone know that this meeting is being recorded so that we can capture all of your contributions. And you may have noticed, too, that the prior meetings we posted, we have done audio and video recording and posted those on our website, so they're available. It also really helps us after the fact to make sure that we've really captured all the input that we received during the meeting. So I want to introduce our Mass DEP team. You're going to see them, some of them, during the course of the meeting, speaking. From our Bureau of Air and Waste, we have Greg Cooper, our Division Director for Hazardous and Solid Waste, John Fisher, Deputy Division Director for Solid Waste Materials. And then we also have a couple of other staff who work on solid waste and recycling issues, attorneys Laura Swain and Shane Settlesing. And then we also have Robert Tokyo from the Bureau of Air and Waste. And so I want to thank them for being here and for all the work that they've done to support the solid waste master plan. I also wanted to give a shout out. I spotted Representative Michelle Siccolo in the virtual room, and I wanted to welcome her and thank her for taking the time to join us tonight. So these meetings and tonight is really about hearing from you. So we're eager to hear your perspectives and ideas about managing solid waste and recycling in Massachusetts. And they're equally important to us, whether they're big picture, statewide, international policy ideas, or they're just based on your own experience and your own community. So far, we've been really thrilled with the response, and we've had really engaged thoughtful participation so far, and we're looking forward to the discussion tonight. And I also noticed, looking around the virtual room, some attendees who have been part of our prior meetings. And so really appreciate your dedication to join us again. So in my role, I'm going to walk you through the agenda and give a brief introduction and set some context for the discussion. But before I do that, I'd like to ask Kurt Cabral, who is our consultant helping us to facilitate the Zoom platform tonight, to give an overview of how virtual participation will work, how you can let us know when you'd like to speak, and other ways you can share information with us tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Kurt.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, so before we go over a few Zoom-related logistics, Stephanie said this meeting is being recorded, so we have a record of your comments. In order to minimize background noise, currently, all attendees in this meeting are on mute. However, there will be opportunities to provide feedback, and we will unmute you. In order to provide feedback, please do the following. If you haven't done so already, please enter your full name, if not currently showing, so we can easily identify you. For those new to Zoom, you do this by opening the participants panel, if not already open. For many, it will be docked on the bottom of the screen. Once you see the panel appear on the right side of the Zoom window, hover the mouse over your name in the participants list. You'll see more options under more. You can select rename. Please take a moment and put your full name for the record now. If you are having any difficulty doing this or with any Zoom feature tonight, you can use the chat option at the bottom of the screen, and you can direct your question to myself or Maya. And you'll see next to our names, it says Zoom supports. You can identify us throughout this meeting. Okay. When we open the virtual floor for your feedback, we need your help to keep us organized, to determine who would like to speak. You can do this by raising your virtual hand, which is typically found by selecting your name in the participant panel and choosing raised hand. Take a moment and find the raised hand option, which may be in a different location based on your device or browser. As practice, please raise your virtual hand now and keep it up. Again, if you can't figure out how to do this, please reach out to Maya or myself in the chat window. Now, give everybody a few seconds to find their virtual hand. And again, please keep it up. Okay, I'm seeing about half thus far, if we found it. Maya, can you make a note of some of the people that are having difficulty finding it? And we'll reach out to you in chat. For those who haven't done so already, we encourage you to share your video by turning on your video camera. The feature to stop and start your video for most will be docked at the bottom of the screen. Thank you. And I'm going to turn the presentation back over to the Mass DEP team.
Thank you very much, Kurt. So here we have the agenda up on the screen now, and we've already discussed the first two items. And I'm going to talk about why we're having these meetings and engaging with the public and the particular areas that we want to focus on for tonight's discussion and that we set as focus for this public comment period on the plan. Then Greg Cooper, who I introduced a few minutes ago, is going to give you a brief overview of the solid waste master plan. It's great if you've had a chance to take a look at the plan on our website or listen to the summary webinar that's posted there. But if you haven't had a chance to do that, not a problem at all. Those materials will remain available after the meeting. And then we're going to go through each of the three areas that we have highlighted for, that we want to focus the dialogue and the comment on, and give you an opportunity to share your views, ideas, and concerns. We'll go through one at a time and then take your comments. We'll summarize each issue, then open the floor, and move on to the next issue and follow the same pattern. And as Kurt demonstrated, we also have an organized way for people to let us know when you would like to speak. So a bit of sort of context, brief history. Last fall, we released a draft solid waste master plan. We went through a process to seek public comment. We held four public hearings. This was before COVID-19, so those were in-person hearings. We did get a lot of really interesting input. It reflected many different ideas and points of view, which was great. But at the same time, we were asked to engage more with communities and to be sure that we really were connecting with people in different communities, and in particular, to make sure we were considering the concerns of environmental justice communities. And certainly, recent events in our country and around the world have boldly highlighted the need for discussions about racial equity and environmental justice. And at this time, we know, as a public agency, we owe special attention to communities that have borne disproportionate burdens and have not received equal benefits when it comes to environmental protection. And we need to make sure that we're considering these issues and impacts in the update of this plan. And we need to make sure that we are developing and being thoughtful about a way to engage regularly and effectively with these communities. And we're committed to do that as an important element of the plan. In addition, given the ever-expanding impacts of climate change, we also wanted to highlight climate issues and how they play out in managing waste and other materials. We feel that's an important area to be, not just highlighting, but seeking input on. And then, of course, since last fall, when we released the solid waste master plan, COVID-19 has changed our world in every way imaginable. And that includes changes to the way solid waste is generated and managed. So as we well know, we're still living through the COVID-19 emergency, and it's important for us to be, to consider and be thoughtful about what issues have emerged during this time and how those are likely to play out in the way we manage our waste. So for all those reasons, we decided to seek more input through public comment in these meetings, so basically to put the plan back out for additional comment and to host additional public conversations. So we're focusing on the importance of these three areas as they relate to solid waste, environmental justice, climate change, and COVID-19. And I really want to give a heartfelt thanks to several organizations, who I think, all of whom I think are represented here tonight, who urged us to do this. And they didn't just urge us and advocate that we seek more comment. They helped us to organize and promote these meetings, and we really appreciate their partnership. And they are Clean Water Action, Community Action Works, Conservation Law Foundation, and Mass Perp. So we launched the public comment period on June 25th, and it will remain open through September 15th, so for a number of days after this meeting. And as I already noted, but I just want to say it again in case anybody joined late, these sessions are being recorded. We'll be taking notes on the discussion tonight and then going back to the recording to make sure that we capture everything that we hear. We also urge you to submit written comments if you choose to. And as I mentioned, you have a few more days to do that. And at the end of the meeting, we'll show you how you can do that. And so with that, I am going to turn the program over to Greg Cooper. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Welcome, everybody. Really happy you can join us tonight. As I said, we really want to get your input on this important document for the state. I'm going to give a little brief overview of what the solid waste master plan is, and then we'll cover, I'll highlight some of the questions that we highlighted in our announcement, public announcement of these meetings. And then we'll get into, you know, getting your input. So first off, you know, Mass DEP, we are required to maintain a state solid waste master plan. It's in our statute, in the statute for solid waste. And we've done this on a regular basis, basically almost consistently on a 10-year cycle since 1990. So right now, we are working within our 2010 to 2020 solid waste master plan. And we're going to take comment, and the draft is out. And we're here tonight to talk about the solid waste master plan that goes and covers the duration of 2020 to 2030. If you haven't looked at the document before, I encourage you to do so. I mean, really, what it does is it sets out programs and a policy framework for how the state is going to look to manage its waste over the next decade. The process of going through the master plan is a lengthy one. We've started back, I want to say at least two years ago, having discussions with stakeholders about, through our solid waste advisory committee and our subcommittees that are within that group, to talk about the various issues around solid waste. It's important for us to take this amount of time because this period of, you know, moving into a new decade of solid waste management gives us an opportunity to kind of step back, look at where we've been, what have we, you know, where our successes are, where do we need to improve, and help us chart a new course to continue to seek to kind of reduce the amount of waste that we dispose of and properly manage the waste that we do generate. So it's a very important planning document for us, and we hope it charts and helps municipalities and others, you know, to kind of get that same sense of how do we plan for the future. One thing about the plan that is important to know is that we will continue, it's a, we kind of like to believe it's a living document. We will continue to revisit, over the course of the decade, the plan itself. We do this in a number of ways. As I mentioned, we continually have meetings with our solid waste advisory committee and a number of subcommittees there to discuss particular issues, whether it's organics, reuse and reduction, construction and demolition debris. We will basically set up a subcommittee for any issue that we think folks are interested or have expressed an interest in trying to get more detail and more focus on. We also issue an annual solid waste data update, which provides the general information about how much waste was generated in Massachusetts and where did it go. And lastly, we intend to take a mid-year look at the core, at the plan, and assess where we are and if there's any, you know, adjustments, course corrections that we need to make. So as you can see, it's a document that the department, you know, believes in, spends a lot of time and effort on, and it really is something that we work from on a daily basis. So, but tonight, as Stephanie mentioned, we're here to kind of focus on some particular issues. The questions I'm going to cover real quickly here were in the public notice of these meetings, and they cover three basic areas. Environmental justice, and so in that area, and these are just our thoughts about questions to be asked. There may be other questions that should be asked, and you are welcome to raise them with us. But, you know, what specific challenges are faced by populations that are disproportionately impacted by solid waste activities? And what could the Commonwealth solid waste master plan and how could the solid waste master plan address these challenges? How can environmental justice communities, excuse me, screen's in the middle of it, be better reflected in how waste is managed in Massachusetts? And then are there specific policies or programs recommended that would address the solid waste concerns of environmental justice communities? The next topic we want to take input on is solid waste and its relationship to climate change. So what actions, you know, can be pursued to reduce carbon emissions from the management of solid waste to help meet the Commonwealth's Global Warming Solutions Act goals? Let Stephanie give a little brief thing, since Christine Kirby's not here, about what the Global Warming Solutions Act is, if you haven't heard it. But there's a lot of information on our website. But Stephanie, maybe a quick couple lines would be good.
Sure, no, thank you, Greg. So the Global Warming Solutions Act is a statute that we have here in Massachusetts that's been in place for about 12 or 13 years. And it establishes mandatory greenhouse gas reduction goals that the Commonwealth, we as a Commonwealth, need to meet. So the first milestone is coming up this year. In fact, it's by 2020, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 25% as compared to a 1990 baseline. And then by 2050, we're mandated to reduce by 80%. I should note, though, that that's what the original law said. And recently, there've been a lot of discussions about getting to net zero by 2050. And the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has recently set 85% as a net zero goal for 2050. So, but that's a very active discussion that's going on right now. So that's a little bit of background. So we have, you know, across the state, but certainly at DEP, we have various programs and regulations toward reducing carbon pollution, greenhouse gas emissions. And it certainly plays out in solid waste and recycling. And so we wanted to just call it to people's attention tonight.
Thank you, Stephanie. The last piece is going to be getting input on something we're all kind of living in right now. And, you know, what impacts does COVID-19 have on waste management? And, you know, our experience thus far is that it does. It has dramatic impacts. People are working in different places, and they're, you know, in their homes, and it's causing disruption to the system. But the system has reacted quite well. But we need to take all these into consideration. So there, what are some, you know, are there specific waste management initiatives that may be problematic or beneficial to implement as we adjust to the impacts of COVID-19? So what I'm going to do now is just open it up to folks, all of you. As we said, we're here to get your input and start the discussion on the environmental justice topics. I do want to just say that we do realize that these oftentimes run together. Climate change, environmental justice, COVID have similar impacts and are related. So, but let's kick off with the environmental justice. I will keep some time on each topic to make sure. The slide will be up here for you for a number of minutes, and then we'll move on to the next topic. But it doesn't preclude you from going back and having a comment, obviously, if you have something more to say about environmental justice. So with that, I will open it up to the floor. And if you raise your hands, if you would like to say something, Kurt and Maya will put you in the queue, and we'll be able to hear what you have to say. You're on mute, Kurt. You're on mute.
Sorry about that, Greg. Yeah, the first person we have actually is having some difficulty with the raise hand feature, but we communicated over chat. It's Laura Holmes. I'm going to unmute you. Okay, you're on.
Oh, boy. Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input tonight. It's really great to see the large turnout for these. This is the second one that I've listened in on. I'm Laura Holmes, General Manager and Worker Owner at Sera Cooperative. There was a cooperative business created by Black and Brown environmental entrepreneurs from Roxbury and Dorchester, two of the Commonwealth's environmental justice communities for which generations have borne the brunt of health and economic impacts of air pollution, illegal dumping, and unethical waste industry practices that exposed entire neighborhoods to toxic, solid, liquid, and airborne pollutants without any concern for the families living there. Thank you for extending the comment period. These health, climate, and economic inequities and injustices are not new. What's new is an apparent awakening to see these impacts as structural, racist, systemic, and ongoing. We are hearing articulated commitment to examine those systems and make change. That's good. Making that commitment meaningful will take more than adding comments to a report as an afterthought. Intention will be given meaning when right action transcends every problem considered, every decision made, and every strategy undertaken. Every policy and every dollar budgeted must be considered for impact on and restoration of environmental justice communities and the climate. How will the policies that are put in place through this master planning process repair harm and bring new resources into communities from whom so much has been extracted? I listened to one of the other hearings, so I won't repeat at length. But I do want to echo and lift up, we have already heard about the importance of shutting down the Saugus incinerator. I live in Revere, and I know how bad this illegally operating death plant is harming working-class residents as well as the sensitive wetland into which the plant dumps toxic ash. Elaborator cannot be allowed to expand the dump, and they must be shut down. I also echo the importance of reaching out toward a more ambitious timeline for hitting zero waste targets. How might this conversation and the solutions be different if, instead of writing a solid waste plan, we were framing a 10-year vision for 100% sustainable resource maximization? I understand that the DEP must both regulate and work with industry, and that surely must be challenging. Too often, solutions that appear to be most expeditious and cost-effective turn out to be short-sighted. But they do have lasting consequences, causing further harm to communities and the climate. I understand why Mass DEP wants to boast an improved record diverting organics. Your report states that between anaerobic digestion and composting, Massachusetts has several hundred thousand tons of available capacity for food materials. Sadly, the details explaining that capacity says not such a great story. Most of those tons of food materials get trucked into EJ communities where they mix them with sewer sludge to produce less than optimal amounts of electricity and piles of pellets full of toxic chemicals and pharmaceuticals. Please start by surfacing and rejecting greenwashed marketing. Just because a technology provides capacity, whether it be landfill incineration or anaerobic digestion, does not mean it should profit from the damage to communities and the environment while residents choke on pollution and ever-increasing waste disposal rates. We could do so much better. The potential for upcycling harvested organic waste to restore soils, strengthen our agricultural systems, and provide truly clean, renewable energy is tremendous. What's wrong is accepting a deal to squander the lion's share of our organic resources to become mingled with sewer sludge in these wastewater ADs. This is a clear example of both greenwashing and resource extraction without benefit, especially harming and not helping environmental justice communities. DEP should clearly define and incentivize highest and best use throughout the life cycle of the organic stream, production, collection, hauling, processing, and end product. Programs and technologies that harvest source-separated organics and upcycle them locally. And those that create environmental and economic benefits that stay in the community should be promoted. I hope the DEP will work with our communities and find more ways to incentivize and support real forward-looking solutions and not just keep retrofitting the same old industry infrastructure. The least we can do is support pilot projects and push the private and public sectors harder to come to the table and make real investments in real zero waste solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Laura. See, the next person we have up, Craig, is Elijah Romulus. I'm going to unmute you.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Romulus. I am an urban planner by profession. But tonight, I will be speaking my capacity as an advisory board member for Clean Water Action as well as a former resident born and raised in Brockton, Massachusetts. So some specific challenges faced by EJ communities and similar ones that I can think of is early childhood asthma and other related respiratory issues as well as food insecurity. I grew up in the city of Brockton, where many of my childhood friends had asthma and other related breathing issues. It wasn't until my early adulthood that I discovered that the correlation, that it wasn't until my early adulthood that I discovered the correlation between the dirty technologies such as trash incineration and early childhood asthma. I found this out as I was volunteering at different organizations such as the Stop the Power Movement, which kind of provided a lot of the scientific data associated with the said cause. Even right now, you can go to mass.gov. You can search Brockton and asthma, and you'll find a report that reads that Brockton is amongst the top for asthma-related illnesses. I think the master plan can not only strike out the additional 350,000 tons of capacity for waste incineration, but it can make a commitment to phase out incineration in its entirety. These technologies are not only harmful to people in the communities that house them, but also to the ever-warming climate that is on pace to becoming inhabitable for human life. A second challenge is food insecurity. Many EJ communities are also food insecure, meaning there are not enough affordable, healthy food options in a specific area. A shocking 80% of our biodegradable food waste and yard waste goes to, goes to the trash, making up 33% of said waste. If we found a way to salvage our food waste and give it to food insecure that, or at least the food waste that is, you know, still consumable, you know, trying to give it to the food insecure, it would reduce the unnecessary waste and aid the needy. Many times, grocers and restaurants, they, you know, throw away the, you know, I guess, the imperfect fruits and vegetables and such. And that adds to the problem of food waste. Not only that, but, you know, the transport back and forth to the, you know, to dispose of the waste, you know, it's trucking through communities. The exhaust is adding to the breathing issues in said communities. And then an overall suggestion for the master plan as it relates to EJ communities could be planning to provide technical support to review the zoning in these communities as it relates to the industrial uses, either by special permit or by right, and the proximity to residential zones. Just because an area is zoned for industrial uses or, you know, is allowed by right doesn't mean that it isn't having a harmful effect or harmful consequences in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have up Michelle Siccolo.
Thank you. Hi, folks. I'm Representative Michelle Siccolo, and I appreciate having an opportunity to testify tonight. And I first want to start by thanking Mass DEP for extending the comment period and holding these additional listening sessions. I think they're really important and critical to gaining the feedback you need to developing the best possible plan going forward.[1733.91] I have had a chance to look at the plan. I can't say that I've digested it in full or read it cover-to-cover, but I'm pleased with many of the things in it, but I do have some comments and some areas where I think that the plan could be even better. I also just want to mention, my district is Lexington and parts of Woburn, and we are a very engaged district that's very focused on reducing solid waste. We have recently passed a number of bylaws, polystyrene bans, plastic straw bans, plastic bag bans, and we have green teams in all of our schools doing composting, and we're working toward curbside composting. But my district also recognizes how serious it is that solid waste impacts environmental justice communities so disproportionately. And one of the key things that I think was really needed in this plan itself is to completely phase out incineration, ideally within five years, but certainly within the 10-year timeframe of this plan. Six of the seven incinerators are located in environmental justice communities, and we know, and the prior speakers have spoken to this, the air quality impacts on people's lungs, on asthma, childhood asthma. It's really unacceptable and something that we can't allow to continue. So I just want to start there and really emphasize that. I'm also the House co-chair of the newly-created Zero Waste Caucus with Senator Jason Lewis, who is the co-chair on the Senate side. And we have quite a few members that have joined the caucus, and we will be submitting testimony collectively on behalf of the caucus before the deadline. So I have to apologize, I have to leave for another meeting shortly before 7:00, and so I'm just going to hit a couple other points before I conclude my remarks. So, with respect to toxins, which has also been highlighted briefly, there are far too many toxic materials that are banned that are still going into the waste stream and being incinerated in many cases. And so one of the things I think that would be, is critical, is that in this plan that we commit to better enforcement. And I will say, I recognize that the legislature has a role to play. We have to make sure that DEP has a sufficient budget to be able to do that enforcement. But we'd like to see, you know, short-term goals to achieve 90% enforcement by 2025 and a long-term goal to have 0% improper disposal of waste ban items by 2030. So that means essentially that all the items that are already banned, we have to ensure they're not going into the waste stream. I think that pay-as-you-throw statewide is something that also needs to be included, and we'd love to see an interim goal of 50% reduction in the total waste stream by 2025 through a pay-as-you-flow, pay-as-you-throw type program. And then finally, composting, we'd like to see this go from 90% to 100% organic waste diversion by 2030, and we think that's achievable within this timeframe of this plan. So I have written comments that I will submit. I'm really so, so pleased that you adjusted the focus of this plan to include the issues of environmental justice and the environment more broadly. I'm very encouraged, and we in the legislature are looking forward to working very closely with Mass DEP to help achieve the goals of this plan. So thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, Representative. We look forward to seeing your comments, and the Zero Waste Caucus, too.
Terrific.
The next person we have up is Sophia Owen. You're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sophia Owen. I'm the staff attorney and the director for Environmental Justice Legal Services at Alternatives for Community and Environment, or ACE, in Roxbury. Since our founding in 1992, ACE members and staff have been at the forefront of the fight for environmental justice in Massachusetts. We respectfully request that the solid waste master plan center the needs of environmental justice communities and communities of color throughout Massachusetts by phasing out incineration and promoting policies that not only reduce our waste, but provide good, safe, living-wage jobs in a renewable economy for Massachusetts residents. Race is the number-one predictor of how close a person lives to toxic hazards, both in our state and nationwide. A study that measured exposure to ecological hazards in Massachusetts concluded that the cumulative exposure rate to environmentally hazardous facilities and sites for communities in which people of color make up 25% or more of the population is over 20 times greater than the communities in which the population is predominantly white. That's 20 times greater. In addition, although they represent just 9.4% of all towns, communities of color received 37.6% of all carcinogens, 41.8% of more hazardous toxic chemicals, 32.8% of all persistent bioaccumulative toxins, and 37.2% of all reproductive toxins. As you know, six of the seven incinerators in Massachusetts are located in or border on environmental justice communities, and incinerators release a variety of toxins, including lead, mercury, dioxins, and furans, particulate matter, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, acidic acids, PCDs, and PHs. Exposure to these contaminants can cause a variety of serious health risks, including cancer, neurological damages, growth defects, and disruption to the reproductive, immune, and respiratory systems. Residents throughout the Commonwealth face a variety of barriers to environmental justice, including the COVID-19 outbreak. In Roxbury and Springfield, students in public schools, renters in public housing, and people of color suffer from asthma at much higher rates than their affluent peers and homeowners. A state-mandated study found that East Boston residents are exposed to airport pollution and, as a result, suffer high rates of chronic obstructive pulmonary disorder compared to populations living farther from the airport. In the Merameck Valley, incinerators surround communities like Haverhill and Lawrence, and in Western Massachusetts, residents lacking access to transit struggle to find economic opportunities. Given all of these burdens that environmental justice communities already bear, allowing the permitting of an additional 350 tons of innovative waste-to-energy solutions, including the incineration of biomass or trash, is tone-deaf and severely misguided. This is particularly true, given that there are studies showing that in neighborhoods with poor air quality, there have been higher mortality rates from COVID-19. Many residents in these same neighborhoods are the workers who risk their lives at dangerous and low-wage jobs as trash haulers and recycling facility workers. A solid waste master plan grounded in the needs of environmental justice communities would not only prioritize proven solutions like anaerobic digestion and increased capacity throughout the state for composting and recycling infrastructure to divert waste from landfills and incinerators and allow the highest and best use of those resources, but would also ensure that workers in the waste industry are safe on the job and earn a living wage. Environmental justice communities cannot wait 10 more years for a transition to a zero-waste economy. We support the demands that are being made by zero-waste Massachusetts. I know that with a bold and visionary solid waste master plan, Massachusetts can improve the quality of life for Black and Brown people throughout the state, and I ask you to meet that challenge.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Essence Perry.
Hello, everyone. My name's Essence. I'm a student at Williams College, and today I'm speaking on behalf of my community, Fitchburg, Massachusetts. My hometown, Fitchburg, currently houses the largest landfill in the state, which accepts not only municipal trash, but construction and demolition waste, including asbestos and contaminated soil. Onwater monitoring has found elevated levels of toxic chemicals like dioxane and manganese in nearby wells. There's no signs of the site closing or reducing the amount of toxic waste it receives. In fact, as other landfills in the state reach capacity and are now expected to shut down, there's been talk of expanding the landfill in my community to accommodate the trash from more towns and cities. A few years ago, there was an attempt made to expand this landfill, which would have resulted in the destruction of part of Leominster State Forest. Since the forest is public land protected by Article 97, the company and city would have had to protect other land to compensate for the loss of the forest land and a nearby park, including a beach and picnic area on Crow Hill Pond. I know the beach and picnic area. My family spends half her summers there, cooking out and swimming, and it's one of the most enjoyed outdoor spots in the whole community. But advocates at the time were concerned that the expansion of the landfill would have devastating impact on the experience of families using this park. Expanding this landfill would not only put the health of citizens further at risk, it would diminish the already few places where people can safely gather, play, and come together as families and communities. This expansion has not yet happened, but unless the state aggressively moves toward zero waste and massively reduces the demand for landfill space, I'm worried that the proposed expansion will be raised again. This is just another sign of environmental justice communities like Fitchburg and Leominster not being given a voice or even knowledge about harmful decisions like this one. Instead of reducing the amount of waste we produce and reexamining the ways we discard waste, we are in danger of opting for a short-term solution that will leave my community to bear the brunt of waste disposal. This is why we need zero waste now. The proposed solid waste master plan does not address the disproportionate effects that landfills have on communities of color and the fact that we just need to stop producing so much waste. By simply reducing the current laws regarding waste bans and making policy, bold policy choices that drastically limit the waste we produce, these burdens could be forever lifted. We need to stop putting my community and so many already other marginalized communities at risk. Simply because we are not choosing to adopt zero-waste solutions that not only reduce the need for landfills, but reimagine an entire waste system, helping us to create one that is just more equitable and just for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Greg, is Deborah Panetta.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Deborah Panetta. I'm a member of the Saugus Board of Selectmen. I'm also the president of the Saugus River Watership Council. I would like to thank the Mass DEP, as well as everybody else on the call, for allowing me to speak this evening. I have been attending all of your meetings. I think they're all very important. The negative health impacts on people that live near incineration, especially in environmental justice communities, is significant. I can tell you stories of people that I've spoken with, people that have asked my, Sophia and Elijah did a great job explaining this, I'm not going to reiterate everything they already said. Stephanie discussed earlier about the global warming solution goal. By allowing incineration to continue, I believe it's counterintuitive to this goal. In addition, by allowing incineration, it's a disincentive for people to reduce, reuse, and recycle, especially people that are in non-host communities. As you know, Wheel of Brede Saugus, we're the home of both the incinerator, as well as the unlined ash landfill, which you would never allow an unlined ash landfill today. I respectfully ask that the Mass DEP enforce the current regulations by preventing waste materials that are currently banned from entering incinerators and ending up in landfills. Without proper enforcement, even with the best regulations, policies, and plans are meaningless. Mass DEP, I believe, should also support public education efforts so that community members are aware of where their trash ends up and what should and should not be included in their waste stream. I don't think that, me being a public official, I've ever seen anything come out that people can actually go to a website, that we could actually work with people so that they could understand, truly understand what's recyclable, what's not, how to buy products. I think that there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that we can do. I was also very disappointed, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, that the Mass DEP allowed Wheel of Brede Saugus to purchase emission credits since they couldn't meet the current nitrogen oxide standards. Just because they're the oldest incinerator in the nation doesn't mean that they should have gone in a pass on this very important health standard. It doesn't help my community at all. They get to purchase these emission credits from more efficient incinerators, and the people in my community are being negatively impacted. And it's also important to mention that they're in an area of critical environmental concern. If we're truly concerned about environmental justice communities, and that's what this topic right now is about, this wouldn't be allowed. We wouldn't have allowed them, I feel, to purchase these credits. I think that the negative impact has just been so much for us to bear over the last 45 years, and I'm pleading with the Mass DEP to help my community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deborah, please visit recycle smart ma.org. It's a new social media page we've got going that we're running and trying to get the word out, like you said, as best we can. The more people that participate, the better, obviously. Pass that around.
Yeah, we can put that in the chat. It's a great resource.
Thank you. I think that if we could send things out, we could post things on our community. We do have a town of Saugus website, the postings on the website. I think that the more material that people get, I mean, even myself, and I consider myself a true environmentalist, I didn't know that, for example, receipts, you can't recycle receipts. I learned that probably just a couple of years ago. There's so much that we really need people to understand, and there are things that we can be recycling that people just aren't. And I talked about at the last meeting, producer take back. I mean, how many times did we get something from Amazon, and it's a box this big for something very, very tiny? I think we could be doing more. I think, and not just educating people, residents, but also businesses of way to do things better, more efficiently, effectively, better for all of us.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next up is Martin Costello.
Good evening. Thank you very much for hearing me out. My name is Martin Costello. I'm from precinct 10 Town Meeting in Saugus. And I want to commend you, folks, for this initiative that you're trying to embark upon to get us to a point where we're utilizing more of our materials in a more environmentally-friendly manner than we are at the present time, most specifically with regard to the aspect of The environmental justice that you're citing is commendable, but for Saugus, we've been dealing now in Saugus with environmental injustice. We've been dealing with this for decades now because of the Wheel of Brede incinerator that exists here over in Saugus. There is more than an imperative need for a site assignment to be done to that facility. It is becoming increasingly more dangerous for everyone that lives over here and in the other surrounding communities. On July 2nd, we had, of this summer, we had an episode with noise complaints from repairs that they were doing to the plant that necessitated them to vent the steam, and the noise was excessive, and it went on for days. And this was so that it could affect some boiler repairs. And yet, a month later, on the 13th of August, we got a smoke plume coming out from the plant, and this was caused by a water-tube failure in one of their boilers. And it necessitated that the fire department be notified to respond, and the first person to notify the fire department was a private citizen because their ability to communicate to our fire department of the emergency was unable to be done because the water had damaged their communication box. And there was just an absolute horror show over there. And I keep saying, saying over and over again, we need to get a site assignment over there, we need to find out just exactly how decrepit this plant is becoming, and it needs to be shut down. And I've said this before with regards to your department, your mission statement is in your title, Department of Environmental Protection. And I'm going to reiterate the point made by our selectwoman, Deborah Panetta, the recent accommodation to them on the nitrous oxide emissions is outrageous. In conclusion, I just would like to say that what you're doing and attempting to get us to a point where we're no longer burning trash is extremely important because we have to reach that point in Saugus, Lynn, and Revere, as well as the world for that matter, where incineration is no longer considered an option in getting rid of solid waste. Thank you for the ability to have this meeting, and I hope you will take into consideration what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is Jessica Giannino. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that.
That was close. Jessica Giannino, how are you? So, good. My name is Jessica Giannino. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity of, you know, having this meeting tonight, and I apologize for my dog barking in the background. You know, when you talk about environmental justice, I represent the city of Revere as city councillor at large, and when you look at what's happened through COVID-19, and you look at the city of Revere, the city of Chelsea, and the town of Saugus, all three of our communities that neighbor each other have been in the red through that. And I know some speakers previously spoke about, you know, how these areas are disproportionately affected by respiratory issues, and you saw that very, very clear with COVID-19 and how it impacted our communities. Aside from that, I'm a founding member of a group called the Alliance for Health and the Environment, which I see several other members on this evening, and the number-one offender that we face and we deal with every single day is Wheel of Brede. And it's truly not fair that And it's truly not fair that a facility like Wheel Obrator can operate in an area of critical environmental concern, which is our beautiful Romney Marsh. There continued to be allowed expansions. They're allowed to buy credits. And I have conversations about this with people from other parts of the state, and it's almost hard for them to believe, like, what do you mean they can buy credits to meet these deadlines? Or, you know, they're the oldest unlined landfill in the country, and we continue to allow it. So when you talk about, you know, environmental justice and how it's affecting my community in the city of Revere, it's affecting us in our rates of asthma. It's affecting us in our rates of cancer and other respiratory issues. The numbers are clear. If you walk up any street in my community, you'll have stories of, you know, people that are directly impacted by people in their family that had serious respiratory issues, people in their family who were impacted by cancer. And you can't help but wonder when you look up the street and see the smokestacks of Wheel Obrator, that there's not a correlation there. So this has always been a concern of mine. It's something that, being on the city council, we've really worked to hold their feet to the fire and make sure that they're held accountable. So I really ask that the DEP, you know, help us and help, you know, the city of Revere and the town of Saugus and the city of Chelsea that's being impacted by Wheel Obrator and really help to reach that zero waste initiative. And I think the biggest thing is, you know, there are over 10 other communities that are utilizing this facility, but it's our residents that are breathing the air and our residents that are seeing the long-term health effects. So I really want to thank you for your time tonight, and I want to thank everyone for their comments. It's been very informative listening to everyone, and I look forward to seeing the final outcome of this, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to the next slide, but only just to keep us, you know, aware of all the things that we're interested in trying to hearing from. The conversation is fantastic. And please continue to give comments across a broad range of things from all of these topics, climate change, EJ, and COVID-19. I just want to, once again, cover the climate component. You know, what actions can be pursued to reduce carbon emissions from the management of solid waste to help meet the Commonwealth Global Warming Solution Act goals? And as, you know, many of the speakers have mentioned, there's a lot of correlation between a lot of these items we're talking about here tonight. So Kurt? A few other raised hands. Monica Steverman. Will I mute you here?
Hi, my name is Monica Steverman, and I'm an undergrad student at Clark University. I believe it's imperative that our state faces out incineration and unsustainable waste management. We need to shut down the Saugus incinerator and aim for higher waste aversion rates. If other cities and states around the country can do it, so can we. As we've heard throughout the meeting, pollution has affected the health and quality of life of environmental justice communities for decades, and the coronavirus has only exacerbated these injustices. Research has shown time and time again that people of color are experiencing higher death rates from COVID-19 compared to their more privileged counterparts. There's no coincidence for this. These respiratory preconditions are caused by environmental racism and where the incinerators, factories, and hazardous dumping sites are intentionally located. Even though this waste plan is grounded in the future and our policy for the next decade, we need ambitious action now. The current conditions should be a sounding alarm for change. And we need to consider how all these issues intersect. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, next we have Pamela Goodwin.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I'm a Town Meeting Member in Saugus and also a member of Saugus Action Volunteers for the Environment. Just to add one more voice to the previous speakers, you know, as part of your concern to address the issues within communities that have disproportionately borne the burden of waste disposal, Saugus has both an outdated incinerator and an unlined ash landfill. As previous speakers have advised or pointed out, an online ash fill would never be allowed today. Many of us have already voiced our strong concerns about this facility. We're looking to DEP to make the right decisions about this facility and include the phase out of Wheel Obrator Saugus within the next 10 years or less. And guarantee that it will not be replaced by another solid waste facility, incinerator, ash landfill, or regular landfill. We should be looking to phase out all incineration in Massachusetts. And I think that would be an important factor in the 2030 plan. Also, I want to reiterate previous comments that enforcement of current regulations is an incredibly important focus of the 2030 plan. Without enforcement, we'll continue to lose ground. I'll just mention that I won't repeat many of Mrs. Panetta's comments, but I completely agree with all of them, as well as the last several speakers from Saugus who are more eloquent than I. And once again, I thank you for holding these meetings and allowing us to share our comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Pamela. Next up is Jim Taza.
Let me unmute myself. Hi, I'm the elected official for the town of Saugus, for the housing authority. I live behind the incinerator. And three times, there's been the fire department's been called to go there for a fire. They never called the fire department, number one. It seems like the residents always have to call the fire department. And I know the elected official for Revere has called the fire department once. The city councilwoman, Jessica, she's called the fire department. No one, no one, they don't care. They don't care about the environment. They don't care about the people that live near this incinerator. They just don't care. It should be closed down. I'm sick and tired of hearing the noise from that thing. I know Peter Minoglio lives closest, Mike Serino lives closer than I do. They live right on it. I don't live right on it. I live right across the river from it. But I can still hear that noise. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that that place smell when you ride your bike by it. I mean, it's not even, it's, if you ride your bike, you could smell it. If you're riding in a car, you can't smell it. So if you're riding in a bike, you can really smell the grossness of it. And that's all I gotta say. That needs to be closed down. They're not environmental friendly.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Ann Devlin.
I thank you again for this series of opportunities to plead with you to consider the focus of the Solid Waste Master Plan toward zero waste initiatives. Because, you know, I think we all understand that with the mountain of trash that Massachusetts produces, you know, your mandate is to get rid of it. And unless we can reduce that mountain, I don't see how phasing out of incineration within the next 10 years is doable or possible. And so I really think that changing the focus of the Solid Waste Master Plan so that we can work on all the methods toward getting to zero waste. And we've talked about them through all the past meetings. If we can especially get on board with state-run programs such as pay-as-you throw, which has been very unpopular in the cities and towns, but if it's presented as an incentive to reduce waste rather than a tax, I think it will be much more accepted. And, you know, the making recycling as easy as possible. We all know that unless, unless things are very easy, people tend not to do them. As was pointed out earlier, making it easier for the average person to know what to do with certain items that shouldn't be in the trash at all. Having textile curbside, there's no reason why we can't have a curbside pickup of textiles which doesn't belong in the trash. Enforcing the bans that are already in place, such as the food bans, which would make a tremendous impact on what goes to the incinerator. But again, unless we can get that mountain of trash down, I don't see phasing out of incineration as to be possible. And so that's why I think that has to be the focus of the plan going forward. Also, as was mentioned before, you know, I look at a map of Massachusetts and I see where our COVID red zones are, and Saugus is getting ready to go right back from yellow to red again. And you look at the correlation of those sites and where the incinerators are. There's, you know, definite, definite something to think about there. And so, you know, all the more reason, these areas that are so heavily impacted already, we shouldn't have to deal with that pollution as well. And finally, which has also been said over and over again, it's just not fair that this community has dealt with an incinerator well past its shelf life, the oldest incinerator in the entire country. And to add insult to injury, we are the only community that hosts both an ash landfill and an incinerator. And the ash landfill, as we all know, is unlined and sitting in the worst possible area to have an unlined landfill. So as other people have said, again, I implore you to please make zero waste initiatives the focus of the plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person up Greg is Wallace McKenzie. We've been chatting. I have some different raised hand features, so I just took you off, Wallace. Hopefully you can hear us and we can hear you. If there's a delay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This has been very educational. I'm speaking tonight, you know, as somebody who lives, used to live in Revere, Saugus, now Lynnfield. But I was, I have kind of a unique perspective on this. I was a Town Meeting Member 45 years ago and voted in favor of bonds for the RESCO, for the predecessor name, before Wheel Obrator Fry, with the promise that the, you know, that the unlined landfill would not be there in a certain number of years. And here we are 45 years later, still discussing it. The previous speakers from Brockton and Fitchburg, they're facing some of the same issues that communities around, you know, Massachusetts and the nation face with waste. I was rather astounded to read and to hear Selectman Panetta and Devlin speak about, you know, these tax credits that Wheel Obrator is now allowed to use. I'm hoping that as part of any long-term solution and plan that DEP is putting in place, is that if you want to get rid of something, you know, you cannot allow people to buy their way out of it. And I hope that as you put your plan together, you take that into account, not to allow companies or municipalities or other entities to, you know, purchase tax credits in order to solve problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, Deborah Panetta just unmuted you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to speak again, but we're, it's a new topic, climate change. First, I want to address Wallace's comment about the landfill. He's absolutely right. The landfill was supposed to be closed in 1996, covered with a grassy seat. And they've gotten many, many consent orders to extend the life of the landfill. I also agree with Martin's comment that a site assignment at this time should definitely be necessary and required. I think that's very important. People in the community are very concerned about their health and the health of their family and neighbors. I believe that continued investment into landfills and incinerators, especially in areas vulnerable to climate change, is completely out of step with state efforts to mitigate the negative impacts of climate change and protect coastal infrastructure, natural resources, and adjacent neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up Jackie McCurio. Jackie, can you hear us? Looks like your mic has just shut off. Let me mute you again, see if, just give it a second. Okay, looks like it's back on. Jackie, do you want to try that again? I'm not sure if your volume may be too low because we're not hearing you. I think we're having some audio difficulties. You're coming through a little garbled. I'm not sure what could be the issue. Jackie, did you want to put your question in chat? And we can read it aloud? Why don't we try to go to another person and maybe she'll get a better feed if we kind of go back to her? Okay, sounds good. Try that. Very good. Elijah, you're gonna be up next.
Okay, yes. Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. As it relates to climate change, I would just say that, you know, there should be some type of, I guess, inventory of all landfills, active and non-active, you know, over a said timeframe, maybe staying like maybe staying like from 1950 to the present day.
Make sure Jackie's muted here. Sorry about that, Elijah. I thought she was.
No problem.
Yeah, she's muted now. Okay.
Yeah, so as it relates to this question, just looking at, in the master plan, maybe looking at an inventory for landfills, active and non-active over a set period of time, say 1950 to the present day. The inventory should reflect, you know, whether these landfills are capped or not. There should be, and, you know, my suggestion would be like looking at a plan to, in order to place solar or wind power generating technologies on said landfills. Over the past, you know, years to a decade, we've been seeing that more capped landfills do have solar power. So just to, you know, continue that process. And even going further, looking at how to use said energy generating facilities to then, you know, at a discounted rate, help the EJ communities with their own energy bills. That might be something to look into. Another action could be to ensure that all waste management trucks are on a plan to be converted to hybrid or full electric. I know the trucking of waste, as I had mentioned earlier, has a large environmental impact on those that house these landfills. And so the CO2 emissions, you know, hurt those communities. Another point to make on this would be that, you know, solid waste facilities should be obligated to a host community agreement with EJ communities to offset the dirty technology with clean technology. Or agree upon a CO2 reduction measure and ultimately plan for phasing out and de- and decommissioning the facility over time. You know, right now, we see over the past year, you know, Australia has gone up in flames, the Amazon rainforest, also known as the earth's lungs, are on fire, Sub-Saharan Africa is on fire. Now the West Coast from Washington to California is in flames. We see these apocalyptic photos and videos that are coming from it. I find even right here, the Commonwealth is suffering a drought. We see year after year, record-setting hot temperatures. And we're not immune to that. We see in other ways, you know, like nor'easters that bring, you know, extreme flooding to communities. And so, you know, the timing of this hearing, I feel, is especially telling. And it would be remiss for me to not mention that as we see the West going up in flames, we should not be supporting or, you know, encouraging an additional burning of trash to then greater fuel climate change. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I thought I saw a hand raised, but I do not at the moment. So I don't see any other questions, Greg.
Back to Jessica, just to try and see if it's.
Jackie.
Yeah.
Jackie.
Yeah. Janice, she looks like she dropped off. I don't see her back in the room yet.
I see Jackie. Jackie's here.
Oh, you do see Jackie, sorry.
I'm going to move to the next question as we move along. So we got the COVID-19, just to get everybody kind of on all three topics at once. And the questions are there before you all leave them up for a while so to spark some conversation.
I just want to make a quick comment. I've heard from one of our partners that there are some members of a group called Youth On Board, a Boston Student Advisory Committee with us tonight. And I want to commend them for their activism as high school students. And I don't know if you've heard of any member, of the members yet, but if they would like to speak, would encourage them to raise their hands and get in the queue and just thank them for spending time on these issues.
I'm not sure if we have another comment from Elijah or if that was just from a previous, because I still see your hand up. I will take you off mute just in case.
Hi, I'll make my final comment. Again, appreciate the opportunity. I'll just make it as it relates to COVID-19. You know, the amount of PPE that's thrown away definitely has added to the issue of waste management. There should be a plan in place to better manage this, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. You know, in addition to a lot of the other, you know, single-use wastes that we have to manage on a daily basis. You know, EJ communities suffer from high rates of respiratory illnesses. And because COVID-19 attacks the respiratory system, there should be a study, you know, we see that this is a global pandemic. We don't know how this will shape out, you know, if it becomes endemic or not. But the effect of these, you know, facilities that are impacting the air quality of different communities, some previous speakers had talked to that, you know, from Saguas. And so I would just implore that we look at just reducing and ultimately stopping the incineration of trash so that we don't see how EJ communities then get impacted by such things as COVID-19. I appreciate it and I wish everyone a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Megan Stokes.
Hi, my name is Megan Stokes. I work with Community Action Works that has offices across New England. And we've been working on this for a long time. I won't say too much because there's just been such powerful testimony from the frontline communities that are literally bearing the brunt of all of our poor waste disposals over the last few decades. And I've spoken at other hearings. So, but I did also want to point out COVID-19 is, you know, not only caused a health crisis, but also an economic crisis as well. And one of the, kind of like the Green New Deal has linked how we can do better with the environment by reducing climate change pollution by, and also create jobs at the same time. Similarly, moving towards zero waste will also help our economy. We know that focusing on composting and recycling, reusing, these create, these industries create more jobs than landfills. And most studies show that on average, 10 times more jobs per ton of waste versus landfilling or incinerating. And so, also just wanted, that hasn't, that hasn't come up yet. So I wanted to point that out as well. And, and also just clearly, it is far beyond the time to retire the Saguas incinerator. It is well past its retirement date and the landfill should absolutely not be expanded, especially given that it's in a critical environmental zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Martin Costello. Let me just take you off mute. Seems to be a delay here, I'm not sure why. There we go.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Come on.
Yep, you are.
Sorry. The question that you're putting to us tonight on this particular panel has to do with the, the impacts of COVID-19 on waste management. There's reports today now, alarming reports by the way, as to the distinct possibility that there are going to be long-term cardiovascular effects for people that contract COVID-19. And these are people that prior to their contracting this particular pandemic, this virus, were probably in all likelihood fairly good health. If you take that report and you, you add it to a person living within a proximity of a, of a facility or, or an institution or anything that is polluting the air in which they're supposed to try and function in, you've got yourself a really exacerbated situation, a real tinderbox, if you will. I would suggest to you that one of the things that the Department of Environmental Protection might want to consider going forward is to consider working in conjunction down the road with Departments of Public Health in coordinating some sort of research on, on how this is going to play out. I don't think it's going to play out very well, by the way, as far as an increase in the number of persons that are going to have long-term health problems. And they're going to have been exacerbated by the fact they were already in an environment where the, the, the air quality was not good. And now they've contracted this, this virus. And I think it's something that your agency and, and health departments could work in conjunction with to, to further move us along in getting to a zero waste, more environmentally friendly and safe environment for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mary Lester.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Greg, Stephanie, and other staff members for your time and allowing us to have a voice moving forward in these important, in specific topics. Hearing what you all had to say tonight is renewing my faith in the system. I'm the Executive Director of the Saguas River Watershed Council. We are a nonprofit organization founded in 1991 to protect and restore the natural resource of the Saguas River watershed. You've all heard what we had to say earlier, but I completely agree with the previous speakers and we share the same views and frustrations. Again, also, I live on the, close to the, sorry, the Wheel Obrider and have suffered major health issues and could be related to Wheel Obrider. The Saguas Ash landfill is the only ash municipal solid waste landfill in the state accepting waste to an unlined landfill cell, lacking the double liner now required by DEP. This landfill was supposed to be closed in December of 1996. As Jessica mentioned, Revere and Lynn were shaded in red in the latest COVID update. That means they've had at least eight confirmed coronavirus cases per 100,000 residents over the past two weeks. It was not surprising that a Harvard University study recently published showed that the higher levels of particulate matter are associated with 15% higher COVID-19 mortality rate. This is 80% of the solid waste incinerators are located in environmental justice communities. This facility has been the roots of the environmental injustice. The location of environmental burdensome facility like Wheel Obrider is such a disadvantaged area. So subsequently, the decisions that are made moving forward should not have been a negative twist accumulating environmental burden. We discussed many facets of the climate change in the previous meetings, although I couldn't agree more with everyone that has commented, like to bring up again, the neighbor of Wheel Obrider. As you know, recently, an ENF was issued in regards to the Dewey Daggett landfill remediation project. This was an 8.5 acre project consisting of an inactive landfill, which is burdened by the Salem Turnpike to the now, to the northwest, Wheel Obrider landfill to the northeast, and the Pines River Salt Marsh to the southeast within the A C E C. I know you've all heard my questions multiple times. Now, why isn't Wheel Obrider being held the same status, standards as Dewey Daggett? I take it, I'm sorry, my computer's completely. The North, the Northeast Climate Science Center projections indicate by the end of the century, the average sea level in Dewey Daggett project, the project area is expected to be an intermediate projection of five feet. This is scary for all of us. I know you've all heard my questions multiple times. And I appreciate you listening. I'm sorry, I can't find, I'm looking for. I'm sorry, I lost everything that I had earlier. So I appreciate your time this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. You're on mute, Kurt.
My apologies. Next up, we have Janet Dominance.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thanks. Again, I want to echo the thanks to the DEP staff for all the time and effort that they put into putting these hearings on this summer and extending the public comment period. Unlike Mary, I wish I felt like Mary. She started out by saying that her faith is renewed. I feel like I've, this is my fourth hearing this summer. And, you know, I, I think and read and talk and do a lot of work around waste issues. And the more that the problems of the planet seem to, somebody earlier used the term apocalyptic, like, I don't know how we're going to achieve justice. I don't know how we're going to get the planet Earth, you know, safe from climate change. What I do know, and I, and I'm going to oversimplify to make the point, what I do know is when all of us talk about zero waste, it's just very clear cut from the DEP's own materials. And everyone has mentioned, you know, different parts of this tonight. A third of what's going to landfills and incinerators is food and organic waste. We know what to do to divert that. You know, a big chunk is textiles, none of which should be being disposed of. Paper, wood, glass, metal. I mean, the DEP's own beautiful pie chart shows each of these things by color. Well over 70% of that pie chart, we instantly know what to do with to eliminate or divert from waste or reuse or recycle. We know, we don't have to invent a single thing. And yet, you know, everyone, it just breaks my heart over and over again to hear what suffering there is because of this infrastructure that is obsolete, should not be acceptable, and we have to phase it out. So I'm, I'm sorry to like, to, to be, you know, Debbie Downer or whatever, but I'm at the end of these hearings going like, it's just so clear. It's just so obvious. It's not aspirational, you know, saying zero waste. It's very clear-cut policy. We can see by your colored pie chart how we can do it. We just need to make the decision to do it in the public interest and to, you know, to commit to 2030. I, I really feel like the more I listen to everyone, the more compelling and the more clear-cut it is to me. So I'm getting anxious to get a final plan that sets 2030 as a goal for zero waste. And thank you for letting me vent.
Thank you, Jen.
Nobody else has their hand raised at the moment, Greg?
Okay. I want to say the comments have been fantastic thus far. Appreciate everyone's input and enthusiasm on the topic. Couple points that I carried out away from, I know, whether it was a comment about solar on landfills, and I would just say, encourage people to check out DEP's website. We have actually been one of the leaders in the nation on solar power on, on closed landfills. It's really been a giant success. There's more that can be done. There's more of those facilities that are closed and can be capped and put renewable energy on top of them and make good use of them, at least, you know, for the time being. And I think it's been, it's been a real success. But obviously, there's a lot more that can be done, as we've talked here tonight. So like I said, we weren't excluding any comments about other things in the plan or in solid waste in general. And if folks, we were just wanted to kind of try to focus the conversation a little bit on the key questions that we had. But certainly welcome to entertain any comments about the plan in general or waste in general, things that might add value to us as we try to, you know, go through the plan and figure out what's the best path for the Commonwealth. No more hands raised, Kurt?
Greg, yeah, nothing so far.
Okay. Well, while we're waiting, in case someone, something comes to mind, I'll cover some of this other stuff in terms of like the next steps, which folks may be interested in. So today's Thursday, September 10th. We're holding the last public meeting that we had intended to do. We, the plan, the comments on the plan are due by September 15th, which is next Tuesday. I wouldn't, you know, if we get something in after that, I'm sure we'll probably take it. But let's try to keep ourselves making progress and moving forward to try and get as much of this done by September 15th as possible. You can send your comments through email to depp.swmp@mass.gov or you can send them to John Fisher at Mass, in written form, Like I said, we said before, there's a lot of information on the website. Please go there, check it out. It might spark new ideas and, and concepts that you can include in your comments. And you can learn more about what's actually happening with the waste in Massachusetts, what programs we have and what's out there. So I would encourage you to do that. I'm going to leave this up. It sounded, looked like we might have a couple more people who want to make some comments, so let's go back to them, Kurt.
Yep, sounds good, John. Deborah, I just taken you off mute.
Well, thank you very much. As a follow-up to the other two meetings, I brought up about noise monitors and air quality monitors. I wanted you to know that I did receive an email from Ed Brasek, the permit chief. And he said that the Mass DEP approved a scope of work and scheduled to conduct an acoustical study at Wheel
of work and scheduled to conduct an acoustical study at Wheel Abraider Saugus facility and the surrounding area. So I received that this week. I forwarded that email to our Board of Health and to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. So I thank you for that follow-up. If we could also take a look at, now that we have the the noise, but also the air quality as a follow-up, that would also be great. And I want to again thank the Mass DEP for holding this hearing, for holding the four hearings and hearing all of the different voices. I'm sure you'll be getting a lot of letters. I know that when Wheel Abraider wanted to open up the the two valleys and I'm not going to go through all that, but we went through all the MIBA hearings and you got 1,000 letters from the community with concerns. We're clearly very concerned about the Wheel Abraider Saugus facility. I know that you've come to Saugus, you've had hearings, you've heard us probably say a lot of the same things over and over again. And as much as we appreciate our voice being heard and having these hearings, you allowing us to speak, we really do need help. So that's why we're all on this call. That's why you'll get these letters. And I do hope that you, when you make your decision on incineration and what is going to be allowed for the next 10 years, that you you think about the health of my community. I mean, I'm responsible. I feel responsible as an elected official for the health and well-being of the people that put me in office. And right now, I'm afraid, I truly am. And I need your help. And I think we all need your help. So again, thank you. And I look forward to seeing the final solid waste master plan.
Thank you, Deborah.
See another person at the moment.
Okay. We'll give one more minute and see if anyone has any ideas, comments. As I stated earlier, while we're waiting, I'll just make one more plug. You know, we have our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and there's people on this call and on previous calls that are members of that Solid Waste Advisory Committee. It meets on a regular basis. It has subcommittees that discuss organics, discuss CND, try to dive into the details of how do we actually get, you know, things implemented and done. And participation from folks, we have a new reduce and reuse work group that has, I think, you know, over 150 people participating on it. And we're getting a lot of great input and good ideas and and really action items that we can, the goal of those subcommittees is develop action plans that we can begin to implement and will continue to modify and grow as we go through the next decade. I encourage folks to participate as best they can. Any more comments, Kurt?
Nothing that I see, Greg, nothing coming in.
Okay, I'm gonna look to close the public hearing, but I'm going to see if Stephanie wants to say any final words. Stephanie?
Thank you, Greg. I just want to say a huge thank you and express appreciation to everyone who's part of the meeting tonight. People have been really thoughtful and respectful in their comments and just really appreciate the time that you've taken. And if you choose to submit written comments, thank you in advance. And just appreciate the opportunity that we've had to engage with you tonight. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. And I agree with that. And once again, thank you all for joining us this evening. And please send your comments in. And I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Good night.
Take care, everyone.